Yes. No, you have to remind us.
It's...
I'm going to call this meeting to order. We start every meeting with a Fledge of Allegiance. If you'd please rise and join us.
By the Fledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Vagel may be joining us, and Commissioner Favalli had something come up at the last minute. She will not be here, so we'll see if Commissioner Vagel comes. Either way, we do have a call. Now is the time that we take comment by people in attendance. If you want to speak to something that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward. And you can come right up and give your name and address, and make your comments.
Hi, my name's Peter Dometra. I live on 2621 Inverness, just outside of your fair city. And I'm sure you're all thrilled to hear me here today. It's been a while. You know, not much has changed, except that the acceleration of our greenhouse gas emissions globally is continuing at a faster rate than it has in previous decades, as we are now climbing at around three parts per million per year, according to the Keeling Curve Measuring on the Yamam Top in Hawaii. And, you know, I know there was some incidences over the summer, or excuse me, winter. And all I can say is, you know, some of your kids are going to be asking you, when did you know and what did you know? And, you know, there are groups, there are worse things than me out there. And there are groups that are going to be pushing for more things to happen. It's happening overseas. It's coming here. And hopefully, it'll be done one. But, we all know, that doesn't always happen. So, I'd just like to encourage everyone to do any due diligence research they can. And if you could pass along a message to your fair superintendent of schools that she needs to check her grammar next time she sends a letter threatening you with arrest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to us? Speak to this body. Okay, I will bring it up here, and we will take any comments from the commissioners, and we'll start on this end with Commissioner Walters.
Thank you, Mayor. I expect to hear a lot of this. It's been a couple of weeks since the Fourth of July celebrations now, but I want to give my thanks to all of the volunteers who helped make it such a successful day, as well as the city staff. You know, Karen did an amazing job as a city clerk with the Five K Race, with all the rest of the organization for that. Fred Bund did an amazing job. The rest of the Parks and Recreation Group, Public Safety Department, fantastic volunteers. Thanks to all of you for your support, making it just another wonderful day for our city.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, welcome back.
Thank you. This couple of meetings, it's always good to be home. No matter how far I travel, I'm always reminded this is a really great place to live, and that we do some wonderful things here. I wanted to, today, just call out a thank you for Fred Bund, who I know he's not here, but I'm sure someone will pass that thanks along to him. The master planning process for Parks and Recreation has gone really well. And I've had an opportunity to attend several of those meetings and listen to community input and feedback. And I think Fred is doing a really great job of managing process that's going to bring a broad set of ideas forward for the future. So, thanks to him, and it's a great process. We're engaged in it.
Great, thanks very much. Commissioner Emmerich.
So, I too want to commend everyone who worked on the Trailblazer, the July Fourth Parade, and all the organization, and public safety. Everybody did an awesome job. Karen, you were wonderful. It probably was a little bit difficult to pull some volunteers together for all the intersections, but from what I hear, it went pretty, pretty well. And I know that I had worked at Pack and Pickup on Friday, and I know there were, there was a good turnout. We had quite a few people come. And so I know it was a successful time. And also, the Parks and Recreation Roundtable sessions were really productive, and I enjoyed going. I went to both of the sessions, one in June and one most recently. And really, very, I feel very excited about the ideas that were brought forward. And I love looking at all the concepts, all the concept drawings, and I liked all of the public input that was put out there. It's just really a lot of fun. Very exciting things that we have in store for the future in our community.
Really good. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Duncan.
Yeah, I thought the Fourth of July went off well, but it always does, much because of Karen's amazing effort behind the scenes, or in the scenes. And Fred, but there are so many others who volunteer and do so much. So, it was a great day, and it was a safe day. People had a great time. So, thank you to those who volunteered as well. I have nothing else. Commissioner Favalli did want to extend the same sentiments, so she's unable to be here, and wanted to make sure everybody knew that she wanted to thank you and say that she's grateful for all the good work.
Commissioner Peter.
Hi, I'm Zaco. Thanks and praise to staff for all their work, again, on the Fourth of July as well. And then also, for public work staff for wrapping up our streets projects for the summer season. So, we're transitioning to some utility work, but we've completed our street projects for the summer. So, at least in East Grand Rapids, we'll be able to get around with fewer detours during the construction season.
Yeah, because there are plenty of them in other places.
Yep.
So, streets was on my list as well. For anyone that was wondering about the streets and watching this, a lot of comments about all those stones that we put on, those stones that we put on Lake Drive and Wealthy, and what are we doing? And I thought we had a lot of money from the, from the roads. And I hope that as it went on, it became apparent to people that there was a method toward madness. This is absolutely one of the many tools that we have in our toolkit to keep our roads healthy and working for us. My analogy is a pair of shoes. When you get a hole in your pair of shoes, first you might stitch it, and that would be like fixing a pothole. But eventually, you might have to put a new sole on it. You don't throw the whole pair of shoes away. And so there are various techniques that we use to help extend the life of our roads, and that's using our tax dollars wisely. And so, this, these unorthodox, somewhat unorthodox to us, methods that we've used just on Lake Drive and Wealthy this year, and we've used them on other roads as well. But that extends the life of those roads, and is good for our tax dollars. Eventually, it probably extends their life by four or five years, and eventually, we'll have to grind and resurface and put on a whole new surface, but this enables us to go longer. And so, I think some people were thinking the stones would just be left there, but no, we got the topping on, and everything was followed the way we're supposed to. And so, these are really great techniques. And I thank Mr. LaFabe and his crew for getting these all done. And I think East Grand Rapids is pretty darn good right now. So, thank you. And I also want to echo the congratulations and thanks to Karen, because that, that race on the Fourth of July morning, I, that takes so much effort. And I just can't believe everything that Karen does year after year after year. And we wouldn't have it without her hard work. So, thank you, because it really does help the community. That's a big fundraiser for our East Grand Rapids Community Foundation. And I also want to thank Spectrum Health, who came through in a very big way in being our major sponsor for both the race and the Fourth of July activities. And so, when you're watching those wonderful fireworks, thank you Spectrum Health, because they did make a major donation to help us keep that a great day, as always. And people say, well, this is quite an event here. And I would say the Fourth of July is our big day in East Grand Rapids. We do lots of other things all year long. But that is a day from eight in the morning until 11 o'clock at night. We won't even be on that, because public safety is out there directing traffic. And we always know that that can be a dangerous place, and they keep things moving, so that's... And then, and finally, thanks to the Parks and Rec Department, because that is all a really big day for them. Well, that's not finally. Add one more thing. So, we were approached by the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and they wanted to give us an award, which I have right here, and I will, I will be putting it up. And so it says, "The Flag of the United States of America Committee Certificate Award Presented to the City of East Grand Rapids for Proper Use, Correct Display, and Patriotic Presentation of the Flag of the United States of America." So, that was presented to us from the DAR, and I want to thank them for doing so. And I know that when we drive down Wealthy, and you see that flag at the end perfectly centered, with those flowers on either side, it does look pretty, very spectacular. But here, too, at our city offices, we also display it correctly. So, it was nice of them to represent that stuff. All right. So, those are the report of the mayor and city commissioners. So, we will get to our regular agenda items. And the first is, oh, excuse me. Commissioner Vagel, did you have anything?
Thank you. And I apologize for my tardiness, and thank you for your understanding.
No worries. Glad you're here. Okay, so our first agenda item is a zoning variance hearing on the request of Daniel Blanford of 1626 Robinson to allow the construction of an unattached garage, resulting in a total building coverage of 38% instead of the allowed 35%. And this will be presented by Alex Kuzikar.
Hello, Mayor, city commissioners. Just a correction, that's an attached garage, not a detached garage. So, the applicant, Daniel Blanford of 1626 Robinson Road, is requesting a variance to allow a total building coverage of 38% rather than the maximum of 35%. This is in order to construct an attached two-stall garage with a mudroom slash bathroom conjoiner. In the process, they would be demoing an existing carport that exists on the property in order to construct this attached garage. The property is very unique in size. It's a non-conforming lot with approximately 40 feet of width, and about 3,747 square feet of area. It's the second smallest lot in the 300-foot surrounding area besides the property just south of it. That's about half the size. The property is also located right across the street from Aquinas College, resulting in very limited on-street parking due to student commuter parking. These special conditions are not a result of the, a result of previous actions of the applicants. Authorizing this variance, my opinion would be a substantial, or not be a substantial detriment to neighboring properties. The small size of the property makes it difficult to stay within that 35% maximum requirement. And the properties just south, they're more likely well over that requirement, with their property being almost half the size. So, it wouldn't be unique to the area. If there's any questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
Could you say that last point again?
It wouldn't be unique to the area.
No, no, blundered. What was the whole thing? Why was it substantial detriment?
Yeah, I said it wouldn't be a substantial detriment.
Okay, and it's not unique to the area?
I was mentioning how the property just south is almost half its size.
It's half the size. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, and the house on that property is most likely well over that 35% maximum.
Okay, that's what I've been saying.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any? Okay, go ahead.
So, Alec, I have a question for you. I just read through the detail about the impervious surface area. And I was just wondering if you could refresh my memory, what is the max impervious?
50%.
50%?
For this particular plot, it's 50%.
So, it's just shy of that?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay, thank you. All right, so I will hand over the public hearing. And we always allow the applicant the first chance to speak. So, if you would like to come forward, the applicant would like to come forward? Give your name and address, please.
My name is Daniel Blanford of 1626 Robinson. I appreciate Alec's presentation. And I have substantial agreement with that. I have a small lot, so it's unique to me, precisely because of that reason. 35% coverage of that lot does not leave me much. I've lived there for quite a long time. It's fine for a single person, but I'm planning to upgrade it, renovate it, and hopefully sell it. And I think that all the criteria that this ordinance sets forth to, for a review are substantially in my favor. It's a unique size area. It's non-conforming use as it is. And certainly, there's no action of mine that resulted in that, in that situation. That size might bought that house approximately, almost 40 years ago. And it's certainly, in some ways, would help others in the area. It does allow me to put two cars off-street parking. Parking in that area is at a premium, particularly out of Roseland Street. I'd be able to, whoever, at this point, now get two cars off. And I think most all, certainly all the properties down Robinson have sufficient off-street parking to do that. And most all of them, except probably the one directly south of me, have longer driveways and garages where they can get a couple of cars off-street parking as well. So, it does alleviate that problem in the area as much as I can, at least one car off the, off Roseland Street. And I think that we meet all the, I meet all the criteria in the ordinance to allow the variance. And I hope that it'll be granted to allow me to upgrade, upgrade the property and see that it's more sellable and in there for a family instead of a single person that's been living in hell for the last time. Want to answer your questions? Do we have any about what my plans are? Anything?
Question for you. The existing carport, which, yes, this would be a drastic improvement on.
Yeah.
The, it's a single driveway, I believe, approaching that now. And you probably have to cut the curve slightly differently, because you are planning a two-car width driveway at this point, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I assume that there probably be some adjustments to any trees in the, in the right of way?
There might be. It's hard to say. I actually kind of share driveways with my southern, my neighbor to the south. So, we might not have to move it as far to the north as might, might be the other way. But we're gonna, we will give more, bit more setback to his property. I think it's only about, it's less than a five-foot setback now. I think the normal setback is seven, but for a non-conforming lot, I think it's a five-foot setback. So, that does, that indicate a legislative ordinance intent to allow non-conforming lot some leeway from the strict, strict application of zoning ordinances. And it's not like I'm building a massive thing there to cover 3,800 square feet. Gee, the square footage right now, the footprint of my home is less than 900 square feet, I think. 30 by 30 or so. And then, taking down the carport gives me another 200 square feet there. Breezeway and downstairs bathroom and laundry room and a sitting room there is about another 200 square feet. And then adding a separate stall onto the carport, making it an actual garage, there is the other 200 square feet that puts me over. And it's 3% more than was required, but still, you can't have a home that would fit the East Grand Rapids style or the size of homes in East Grand Rapids without keeping it within 35, 5%. It's difficult. It's for a full family to live there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak to this agenda item? Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it up here and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the variance as presented.
Support. Okay. And comments? Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I can go first. Sure, sure thing. I've been warming up for weeks. So, I, I tell you, the nice thing about the variance ordinance is that it leaves room to approve things that make sense for the neighborhood based on the criteria that are presented. So, if you take a look at the ordinance itself, I think the only one you really could debate would be Standard A, which is whether or not these are, whether or not conditions exist that are peculiar to this lot. And I think if you described the ideal use of this lot, you would end up describing why this lot is peculiar. You would have to describe why the lot is very narrow and why there really isn't much room to do, to work within the 35%. But fortunately, we made a bunch of changes to the coverage for impervious surfaces a few years ago. And they kind of captured this project nicely. And that is that it comes out less than the 50% required. When we adjusted those for small, small lots, it was precisely for situations like this. So, because this comes in under the 50%, which is really where we did our work on stormwater retention and things like that, to me, it seems easy to approve.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Commissioner Miller summarized things quite well. The exchanges are met. I think the only encouragement, not requirement, would be if, as part of that new driveway, there's a requirement, the resident needs to remove any tree that's in the outlaw. We certainly encourage participation in our tree program here. City is willing to share cost in trees in the right of way. Certainly, it sounds like you have some plans, and I think certainly would help present the neighborhood. But I'll be voting out.
I definitely, I like the point that it helps with some of the parking constraints in that area. Providing those additional off-street parking spaces is definitely a benefit. Not just for the property owner, but just the surrounding neighborhood. So, that's definitely something that I would approve.
And the students of Aquinas, thank you. That's a response to Park. So, I, yeah, I agree with all of this. I, if the impervious surface wasn't met, I would have more of a problem with it. And we have had people come to us before, so I just want to comment on this. We've had people say, well, I want a bigger house, and my lot doesn't fit it. But part of it has been impervious in the past. And the fact that there is a lot right next door that is even more out of compliance, that is important to me. And this also, some of the people that have come to us before have had a problem with backyard access because they want to put too much and too small of a lot. And that's not a issue anywhere. So, so for those reasons, I do think that it's different from some others that have come up to us. Okay, all those in favor of passing the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. It is passed. Happy building, and yes, it will be an improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request for zoning variance at 1139 Eastwood to allow the construction of a covered front porch encroaching into the front yard setback by 7.7 feet, so the six feet allowed. And Alex Kuzikar will present.
So, the applicant, Sonia and Hans of 1139 Eastwood Avenue, requesting a variance to construct a covered front porch, six feet in depth. The porch is to be in the front and also angled toward the north side of the house, towards the back on the side. The variance is to allow an encroachment of 7.7 feet into the established average front yard setback, where only six-foot encroachment is allowed. The six-foot encroachment is something the City Commission recently approved a few months back. They approved the six-foot or a 20% of the required setback, whichever is leased. In this instance, the six-foot is leased, so this is what is used. Due to the applicant's house taking out just a little under two feet in front of the average front yard setback, they're not able to accomplish the six-foot covered front porch without the variance. The average, or the established average for this property would be 35.5 feet. And their house sits at about 33.8 feet, so just in front of that average. Looking at the standards for review, like I just mentioned, since the city just uses, since the city uses an established average of houses within 200 feet on both sides, that's going to put half the houses in front of that average and half the houses behind that average. So, in this instance, this house just happened to get the bad luck draw where they were one of the houses that happened to be foot in half in front of that average. That's, that does not, you know, wasn't created by the applicant. That was just how the house was built back in the day. Authorizing this variance wouldn't be detrimental to neighboring properties. In fact, the house just to the south has a front, covered front porch that sticks out six feet as well. Their front yard setback is pretty much identical. I believe theirs is about, if this house is 35.5, I think the house to the south is 35.8. So, very similar. And theirs is also a six-foot, front, six-foot porch in depth. And I think the City Commission created this zoning ordinance because they want to see more front porches and more, you know, people activating in front of their home and engaging with each other. And I think a private experience would accomplish the intent of that. So, open any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Alec? Alec, and I should have asked you this before, but I, sorry, I just got back to town. There are a couple of other homes, maybe, that have variances for similar porches? Are you aware of them or not?
Well, we had the one, I think, less than a year ago on Lakeside. And it was actually after that we approved that variance where we looked at amending our zoning ordinance to allow more similar front porches.
And, but you don't know about this exact street? I, Commissioner Favalli pointed out a couple houses to me that she thought had gotten variances in recent years that were similar. But, sorry, I should have asked, I-
No, it's okay.
Literally, just heard about it.
I apologize. I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, yeah, no problem, no problem.
Really quick, for, maybe for all of our benefit, can you refresh our memory on what the restrictions are on the front porch versus just building a front yard house? Do we, I know we passed this all in planning, but it was like, there was some transparency, there was some rail, there were some actual restrictions on that.
Correct, yes. And I don't have those in front of me. But yeah, they do, they did involve the handrails and the transparency. And with this front porch, you actually have a, what it's going to look like.
I think one of those criteria, too, is that it would be enclosed.
Yeah, that's, that's really the main reason.
Correct. You still have to enclose along the fronts. And correct, and they would not be allowed to enclose that in the future.
So, there's no extra motion that we have to worry about for that anymore?
It's already in the ordinance, like?
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, if anyone, say, someone purchased a house down the road and wanted to do that, we would catch that when they would submit a building permit.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right, thank you. All right, I will give a little in, public hearing on this agenda item. We always give the applicant the first chance to speak. If you'd like to come forward.
Hello. My name is Sonia Cleo. I reside at 1139 Eastwood. I'm here with my husband Hans and my daughters Hannah. We also have two younger boys, but they're at soccer camp. We're new to East and absolutely love the community and the small-town feel. Our house, as it currently stands, just kind of has a landing. There's no room for even a chair. We kind of have a narrow driveway where we put our chairs to watch our kids, so it's kind of weird. I'm originally from Croatia. My husband's from Costa Rica, so it's in our culture to kind of sit on the front porch, and we're big coffee drinkers. So I'd like to sit in front of my porch in the morning and drink a cup of coffee, and I'd like to invite my neighbors to come join me, but I can't do that. So, I believe the addition of the porch would add character and value and even curb appeal to our street and to our town as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this agenda? I am seeing one, and we'll close, and I'll bring it up here and ask for a motion.
A motion to approve the zoning variance at 1139 Eastwood.
Support.
Comments?
Well, I think everybody joins me in saying that this is an incredibly reasonable request. It's a very minimal change. I would like to be invited for coffee.
If it's not strong, we're not coming.
My spoon doesn't stand up in it. It's not strong enough. So you seem like great people to have coffee with, right? I will be supporting this tonight. I would like to see you improve your home and enjoy sitting outside and watching your kids. The same thing that many of us are able to do already, and welcome to the community. I have no trouble supporting this this evening.
Other comments?
Anytime that people add front porches, and this is a very reasonable ask. It's not a big ask at all. I think this enhances the community and adds to that, that community feel, and that allows people to engage with each other, which is exactly what we sort of wanted for our community. So I would support this.
I guess, I would just add, this is why we passed the porch ordinance, because without the porch ordinance, this would have been a really big ask for seven-and-a-half-foot encroachment in the setback, and we probably would have looked like we were giving away much more than we usually want to. So this makes a lot of sense. This is a good example of why the ordinance is working, and it's easy to vote yes for this.
Yeah, right along those lines, I think you've got a neighbor directly to the south, which is very similar architecture, as long as you park the road, 1049 to 53, where you've got some front porches to play. So this street is a good candidate for creating the atmosphere that I think we were hoping to create with this ordinance, so.
Yep. I would add two things. One, I support this for all the reasons the other commissioner said, also because I think we decided that six-foot was essentially the smallest kind of acceptable front porch in terms of what would even be safe and reasonable. And so, again, this is a very reasonable ask that you're making in terms of the size of the porch that you want to put on. I also did get a note from Commissioner Favalli, who wanted to make sure that she let everybody know that she fully supports this request, and actually, all three of the variance requests that are on our agenda tonight, so.
For this one, she did, but let's not go with all three.
Fair enough. I may not have the most recent communication, and she's not here to vote anyway, so I should be careful with that as well.
So, yeah, and I like the fact that this really is supporting what we've been talking about, which is to encourage people to improve and have their front porch, that you have that ability to communicate with neighbors, make it a friendlier neighborhood, and that's exactly what you're doing. And I also, Commissioner Favalli pointed out to me, I just ran, I happened to run into her as I was stopping in front of your home, taking a look at it when I drove in today, and she said, she pointed out a couple of their houses on the street, that she told me they'd gotten similar variances. I don't remember them, but perhaps, but they look good and it looks very similar, so I've got to look at them. All right. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Thank you. Yeses.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Next item on the agenda is, we'll just take over here. Zoning variance hearing on the request of Diego Rojas and Lindsay Snyder of 2645 Hall to allow the construction of an eight-foot-high privacy fence, instead of the allowed six-foot-high. And Mr. Isakar is present.
So yes, the applicant, Diego Rojas and Lindsay Snyder of 2645 Paul, are requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot privacy fence along their rear property line. The max height the fence can be is six feet. Both the applicant's property and the property to the north, the fence in between are both flag lots. These are lots that have long, skinny driveways that go up to the majority of the property in the rear. This means that they both, yeah. The applicant's requesting the eight-foot fence to create more privacy between the two properties. As the neighbors to the north has a higher grade and back deck that sits a few feet above the grade, the neighbor has also signed an affidavit stating that they approve and support the variance request. Looking at some, oh, to mention there, looking to do the entire rear of the property line, maybe from the highlighted area from up here to this back corner. Looking at some special conditions on the property, as already mentioned, the property to the north, the elevation does rise a little bit than the subject property. There also is a pretty large deck in the back of their house that sits a few feet above that elevated grade as well. These special conditions are a result of the applicant's. And it wouldn't really be a detriment to surrounding neighbors. As mentioned, these are both flag lots that aren't really seen from the street. The only people that would see this fence would be the two property owners that would be in between, the adjoining, or the adjacent neighbors to the west. They may be able to see it, but from the street, they're not likely going to be able to see it. Yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be free to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Is there, there's a, the applicant makes a note that where the fence line is, there's some sort of depression or swell where it drops there. Did you notice that, and how significant was that?
It does dip down a little bit. I did visit the property, and it didn't swell down a whole lot, but it does dip down a little bit and then increase towards the neighboring property to the north.
So I'm not sure this necessarily makes a difference in my mind, but I'm just trying to understand if it drops, you know, a few inches or a couple of feet, you know, because we're talking about a higher, how high does the fence, does the eight-foot fence actually seem like it's only six because it's in a two-foot hole where the line is? That's, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, but I believe the applicant would be able to answer that more efficiently. There's a picture as an area, if I can, I can't see it with the projector. Yeah, I can't really see.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see, okay. Mike, I have one other question. I don't want to cut anybody else off. My other question is, and I know the chief isn't here, but I don't know if Doug or anyone else can speak to that, is there any potential safety issue or concern that would come from having a higher fence in terms of access to the property or anything like that that would be a possible issue? I couldn't think of anything, but I didn't want to assume that.
It does actually require a building permit for an eight-foot fence, so it would be inspected by our building officials.
Yeah, but I can't, I can't give you any specific that would preclude any sort of access or anything to be unusual beyond a six-foot fence. I guess I would, the only other thing I would add is that I think some of these conditions, at least when you're talking about depressions in rear yards and views, I do think those are, even given the flag lot situation, I do think those are pretty prevalent. I know I have the same exact situation in my house, too. So I guess I just want to make sure that everyone's thinking about that, too, not in terms of the flag lot, but in terms of what the ask is related to privacy.
Alec, can you provide some clarification? I spoke briefly on this, but maybe we get that highlighted. Yes, thank you. That highlighted portion of that line is that entire, you, and this is a question that are asked towards the applicant, please let me know. That highlighted line is that entire distance, eight feet, as I was out at the property, it appeared that there was, off of the, on the east side of the property here, that there was a lot of poles being put in for a new fence kind of along that way, but at the very back corner appeared there was an eight-foot post back there. So do you have further clarification? Is this best for the applicant to clarify how, where, I think there was discussion of a gate, the narrative as well? Yep, so it might be a better question for the applicant, but I do know that they do a defense permit for a six-foot fence that's running along right here. Yep. So that post may be for that defense going in, and another, the posts that they put in are really very high, and then they cut them off, went back, panels are installed. So that may be what you're seeing. And then, the reason why I stopped here is this fence does angle onto the neighbor's property, going to the north right there. Okay. I'll ask the applicant for further details. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I'm curious about the shed encroachment.
Those have been moved already.
I'm sorry?
Those have been moved already.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll open a public hearing on this agenda item, and we always give the applicant the first chance to speak. Please come forward, give your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sheegul, members of the- City Commissioner. My name is Diego Rojas, and I live at 2645 Paul Street with my wife Lindsay Snyder. Wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and it sounds like there's a lot of questions about our request. First, this isn't really just our request, this is a joint request with the Richardson's family. They are unable to be here today, that's why we submitted to have the name and support. Both of us enjoy a very good relationship. They're a wonderful family. They have older kids, and quite frankly, they'll spend the summers in East as we have younger kids. My wife and I have three kids. We have a six-year-old William, five-year-old Caroline, and a 10-month-old baby Kate. And one of the reasons why we're even in this endeavor with fences is because there's a pool on the Richardson's property, and the current fence, and I'll show you a photo.
Sorry, there's a what?
There's a pool, a swimming pool.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The, this will probably give you a better idea as to the lot itself. The Richardson's have a swimming pool just right there, and the fence that exists between our homes right now, it's falling apart. There's actually invasive trees growing through it. My power line is right there. I've had a trimmit bag, it had DTE come out, and quite frankly, the invasive trees have to go. There is a depression in the lot, where the city actually gave us in 2015 permission to put a drain, because our back lot is the four-point of all of those lots draining, and we had a three- or four-inch ice skating rink all the way along when we first moved in. That's been rectified. So the fence needs to come out, and we aren't replacing, we've actually already replaced this fence here with the two families that live there, and that's a six-foot fence. There's no, no one's asking for eight feet anywhere else. The fence and the posts that Commissioner Diego saw are for a six-foot fence with the family that lives in this home right here, and that's being replaced. The post that's there is an eight-foot post. If we get the variance, that would be the post that continues the other way. If we don't, it gets cut, and there's a six-foot fence going to be put in. The reason why this particular request, I think, meets the requirements for the variance are a few. One, we did not create the conditions on the property. The Richardson's home is actually raised, and I have some photographs to show. Their first floor is really almost a second floor. When you look at their patio, as indicated, this is a picture, I didn't have these photos of the backyard of the Richardson family, but you'll notice right here, there's the three feet of elevation in the raised back of their pool area. This is actually looking from their first floor onto our home and into our yard. And quite frankly, when you're standing there, and Alec was there with us, you're basically at waist level to the top of the fence. So if you're on their property, that fence means nothing. You're looking kind of up and over. From our property, I would submit it's fine. I'm not that concerned about it. It is a depression. We do see right through all winter, spring, and fall, because all of the trees, none of those trees are evergreens. Those trees, most of them will have to come out, and we plan on replanting the species. So normally, a six-foot fence would be fine, weren't for, not for these conditions. We're asking for a limited area, quite frankly, because right here, the fence is actually no longer split. When the survey was done, that was a fence. That fence has fallen over and got it in the picture, it's actually just leaning, because all the fence is rotted because of all of the standing water there. We just want to continue the new fencing at an eight-foot level, and by not doing the first 30 feet, our backyard neighbors wouldn't even see it. So the two only people that are ever going to see this fence, because of where our properties sit, completely interior and surrounded by nine other homes, are just Scott, Endeavor, Richardson, and I. There's been no opposition that I'm aware of from our neighbors, so we enjoy a very good relationship with them. We are asking, and we are installing a fence between our two homes. There's going to be a gate there. Our front yard was essentially a road, May Lane, and we do want to have free ingress between our homes. And so we are planning to placing a gate there for free access, and I think that would alleviate any safety concerns. Our primary concern is obviously replacing the fence to ensure the safety of our children, obviously, the aesthetic value of it, and the fact that we intend to remove some invasive trees and replant. The Richardson's are joining in our request because, quite frankly, this is the time of growth. We don't, you know, we've thought about bringing in fill material to fill in that depression, which I could show you another photograph. Sorry, I don't have a better photograph, but it really is a depression. That's where all the water collects and goes down. We've bring in fill material to fill that, to bring it to, you know, put a six-foot fence on top of two feet of soil. It actually affects the French drain and the drainage that we spent thousands of dollars installing and connecting to the stormwater sewer line in 2015.
Have you measured how big the depression is? I mean, can you give me a sense of that?
It's, it's, it's less than two feet, but more than a foot. And you clearly walk down into the depression, and you know what? Since we do have technology here today, I might have photographs that better represent that depression on the property. But it's compounded by the fact that we have the raised lot and then our lower lot, and that's where that water comes in. It's a very unique condition to this home, and I understand the concerns of the council, because I asked for an eight-foot fence, the next thing you know, someone else is going to ask for an eight-foot fence. There is a rhyme and reason. There's good cause for this request. It's not just because we don't like them, because we don't want to see them. Fact of the matter is, if you look at the pictures, we see each other. Even with the eight-foot fence, we are going to see each other, but they're going to have privacy within their first-floor windows. This is a one-story home. We see the kitchen, they can see our home and our property, and really, that's where this eight-foot request comes in. All the other fencing is six-foot, and it's being permitted the proper the right way, even though no one would ever see it. With that being said, if anyone has questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to. I think it's a reasonable request in light of our particular circumstances.
Do they have any questions?
So just so I'm clear, the eight-foot fence, that whole line is going to be in the, where the ground kind of sinks in, so it's down lower. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the people that are in, to the north of you, when they're looking at the fence, to them, it looks like a six-foot fence.
Well, it'll probably even look smaller than a six-foot fence, because, I mean, when they're on, if you're on their property on the deck, which is their first floor, I mean, you're, it's to here, I think you would submit for that when you were out there. So yes, it would be more of a six-foot fence from their side. From our side, it would be, it would look higher. We would be the only ones to see that.
So if you had installed a six-foot fence in that same, that gully or that swale area, then from their side, it would look shorter. Is that correct?
It does. This is from their side.
Okay.
This is the picture, this is the view that you get from their home directly. I mean, it's really like a chest level, not right at neck level, where you're just looking over. And then when we're in our backyard and our side lot, we're looking directly through the hall. They've got windows, there's a big bay window there with their kitchen and living room, I mean, that's-
And they have their swimming pool, too.
And they have a swimming pool in the back. There has to be a fence. There's just no question about it, because my kids barely swim. They're not there during the summer. There's nobody watching this, and quite frankly, I don't trust my kids enough with the swimming pool nearby. So the question is whether or not we can improve the privacy between the two homes with this particular request, and limit it to just the 130 feet that we have, not the entire length. Because I, doing the entire length would be visible from the two lots around us, the rest of the way would.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions for you. So I'm going to go back and forth between this picture and the last one, which you get the red box on, and we can start with that one, and then come back to this one, so.
You'll start with the red box?
Yeah. Well, there, well, I guess fundamentally, what I'm looking at is, is my same question to Mr. Isakar earlier, and I think you've answered it well, but I just want to be clear on this. Really, from the entire highlighted portion there would be eight feet tall, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So from that corner post all the way through, your proposal is to have a potential gate within roughly 10 feet of the corner?
The gate's going to be approximately there.
Thank you. Wide enough for a car, wide enough for a person?
A person, person passage gate.
Perfect.
The intent really is to be able to access both properties, and when our kids go to middle school, it's a shortcut to go through their driveway to middle school.
Great. So now, the highlighted portion ends at a certain spot. So now, go back to your other photo, if you would. I'm sorry, the other photo you had just before, the one from there, Doc. Yeah, perfect. Can you give us a sense of where the eight-feet would stop and where you'd go back to six feet? Can we see that in this photo?
Yes. This is all new fencing here.
Yeah.
That holds up, actually, it's really all the way-
To that post.
Yeah. And this is the tree that's growing in between, and all of this is just invasive.
Yeah. So really, that, the post past the tree there is really where you're proposing the eight-feet stop, correct?
For starts.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
For starts.
Yes. Yep, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to speak to this agenda item? All right, hearing, so no one opposed this? You bring it up here and ask for a motion?
Motion to approve the fence variance as written.
Is there support?
Yeah.
Support. Who'd like to speak first?
I think because of the nature of this property and the fact that it's a flag lot especially, and because they have this, this increased grade elevation of the neighbor to the north, and because it would look like a six-foot fence, it's just, it's kind of a unique situation. And then you factor in the swimming pool, and you're only talking about the one side versus the entire yard, and no one else sees it because it is a flag lot. I don't have any problems supporting this.
I want to say something before I go to the others. I just want, I want people to think about, and I know you have, but I'm saying anyway, about how this could affect other properties throughout the city. I'm thinking about, I'm thinking-
could affect other properties throughout the city. I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of one house in particular that came to us before wanting some sort of alleviation, but there are many others. That, throughout our whole city, we have people that have different grades that, um, could potentially say, well, I can see in my neighbor's first floor or my neighbor's second floor can see into my backyard. And there's nothing that says that we are going to guarantee anybody that their neighbors can't see into their backyard. So I'm just, I, I, just as, as you're thinking about this and talking about it, um, yes, this is a flag lot, and so they have fences all the way around their yard, which is rather unusual, which is probably why we don't have flag, well, flag lots anymore. But, um, I just want you to think about the type of precedence this would set. So I, I know what you mean, because I think the same thing. It's just these two people, but then when I think about everybody else's backyard often, it's just those two people. And, anyway, okay, Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I tell you, I'm really struggling with this one, um, because I'm not necessarily swayed that the fact that it's a flag lot really alters the number of people that will see this. Uh, I mean, I have part of, part of my backyard is a fence, we're really the only one that sees it, is the person that lives behind me. Oh, in the city lot, I'm floral, it's pretty normal. Um, so I'm struggling with that a little bit. Uh, I'm also struggling with declaring that the, the varying elevation is really unique. I, I think you put it quite well, that, uh, many of us have that, uh, in the midst of a fence permitting process myself right now, and the people behind me are lower than I am. Uh, so I'm not sure how unique it is. So I'm, I'm really struggling this, with this, uh, because I think for most of this, I would probably be a no. I think the one place there might be room for me to be a yes is that the, uh, the investment in that drain does create a little bit more of a unique circumstance than, than we have elsewhere. I'm just not sure if that really impacts the fence. So we know that when we grant a, a variance, we're creating precedent if it's something you could apply to other decisions or other properties. Uh, really the only thing I'm seeing that's unique enough to justify that is that, that big drain back there. That's not something that you can alter around. So we've had people come in before and ask for variances of various sorts, and we've said things like, well, you could put some dirt there and put a fence on top of the dirt, or put some dirt there and put some arbors on top of the dirt. Um, and we've done that more than once. I'm not, I'm not alluding to any individual case because that's, that's multiple times. Uh, what's different in this particular case is we really would not suggest that, right? That we, we coached folks to build a big drain and tie it into the storm sewer here. So maybe some of those things that we occasionally suggest are not applicable here. Uh, that said, and this is still really difficult, I, I'm really struggling finding a way to a yes that makes me feel like we did the right thing, but I think that would be the one thing I can hang on if I was looking for something.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I echo Commissioner Miller's comments. I'm, I don't think it's a terribly big ask individually, but I definitely worry about, um, what this means the next time and the next time and the next time. And I know that that, the variance process, and there's a reason why we have standards for review, really point us to making sure that there are special conditions that are peculiar to this particular piece of property and that it isn't something that, you know, maybe twenty percent of our parcels in the city could make a similar type of argument, because in that case, we should be revising the ordinance if we really feel like it's not, uh, reasonable. So I, I think, I think it's not a big ask, but I, I'm just not convinced that we have special conditions or circumstances which are peculiar to the land. So even though I think it's probably still consistent with the spirit of the fence ordinance and the other factors are, are, would, would probably be met, I, I don't think it's a unique enough circumstance for me to support. So I'm, unless I hear more facts or information, otherwise I think I'm going to be a no.
Anyone else?
Well, yeah, this is why being up here and listening to fellow commissioners and talking these things through was really helpful, because I felt for a while I was a guest this afternoon, and then I got a little closer and, uh, I too developed some doubts, and it was really with regard to the uniqueness or lack of uniqueness, perhaps, of this particular property. And, you know, just hearing Commissioner Miller talk about similar topography questions on his own property also gives me pause. Uh, I'm sure he's one of many, uh, in the city. So, um, yeah, this is, this one's a tough one for me too. I guess, um, I have enough questions about this to say I'm not sure I can support it. The, can we keep talking though? The drain, I agree, the drain thing.
So, so let me, um, Commissioner Miller, I don't remember if, how long this was ago, so I don't remember. You were also on, um, when I read, like, Boulevard, um, once you pass Manhattan, there's a lone house there right now. Some other pieces, piece of property, they have, um, you know, taped off, but, and there are no other houses out there right now. And I, were you here when that house?
This is the one that's...
It's so much higher than the ones down.
Yes. Yep.
And they were frustrated, and part of it is that you do have that drain going through that backyard. So this is very similar. And they built that house quite a bit higher. Part of it had to do with, they were working with the drainage and everything else. So they, they wanted to have, you know, a, a high fence because they just didn't like the fact that suddenly this house was in their backyard. And, um, so I, I'm looking at it right now on my map on my phone. Thank you, MapQuest, for reference, I'm using Google Maps. Um, but it looks as though they have planted a lot of trees, and so really privacy could be, um, could be achieved in many other ways, and planting some trees or bushes would be that. But there are so, that so many properties in these great apartments that have different grades. We also had a problem in, um, Attorney Huff, well, remember the many conversations we had around houses that were building up their foundation, and so their first floor was kind of looking into your second floor. And boy, if we allowed that, then people are going to have, you know, these twenty-foot fences. So I think it's a, I think it's a, literally a slippery slope to, to go from there. Um, and I, I, I think that that house is, you know, you have a lot of coverage because of the greenery back there, and I just would encourage if, if you're uncomfortable to just get some additional greenery. But I think it's a bad idea to go with eight-foot fences because otherwise really what we're going to be doing is saying, okay, let, now, not only are we saying that maybe you can, but we got to measure and let's, I mean, where does your yard really start? And is it down three feet or is it down three feet from this? Or is it up three, uh, we had a hard enough time, we were talking about the whole new house, this would be a nightmare to enforce. Um, so I, I'm going to have to against it, and I, and I would feel worse if I thought it was going to be a great travesty, but I think that even looking at that picture that you have right now, I think that there's quite a bit of privacy here with the six-foot fences it is.
I guess I would also feel a little bit better, um, well, backing up. I, I'm so happy that the, uh, applicant has a good relationship with his neighbor and this is a joint thing. That's the way to go about this. And yet, it sounds like your neighbor isn't always going to be there, um, or perhaps not, and you will be. Uh, that's a guess, but that also creates a little bit of hesitancy. So in it, in itself, it seems like a great idea between the two of you, but there are just factors beyond your lives together in that space that, that worry us a bit, and being on infrastructure committee and going through fence, uh, discussions.
Ooh.
Yeah, but, uh, if anybody paused, so. But, but I will say, that's like the nicest thing I ever heard, is that they're going to let you know the gates, your kids can get to school easier. That's the nicest thing, really does.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Um, all right, we have a motion in a second to allow the eight-foot fence. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose say no?
No.
No. Sorry, it has been, not been approved. Okay. Um, next on is the consent agenda. Make this House motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support, support, thank you. We have a motion to support. Any comments about the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose say no. Um, it was approved. And unless there's anything else, we are here. Thank you.
Get to your country.
Three variants in a...
That's, that's impressive.
Good job, good job.